Okay, good evening, Wareham. It is May 4th. And Peter is about to join us and there he is. Good evening, Mr. Titlebaum. Could you call?
Yes, call the meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen for May 4th, 2021 to order. Maybe I have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. All the selectmen are present as well as town council and town administrator.
Okie doke. Pledge of allegiance. Alan, would you please lead us?
My pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Let's see. Announcements. I'll lead off with this one. The town moderator is in the process of releasing a declaration to postpone the town meeting that is scheduled for this Saturday at 11 o'clock at Spillane Field. She's looking to push it off to June 12th at the Deacon School. And the reasons for that are twofold. One is that the COVID numbers are still in the red. She's concerned about that. We're hearing about outbreaks here and there, certain businesses having multiple outbreaks, so on and so forth. The other reason is that the forecast for the weather on Saturday looks unsettled. So she's looking to move it out to Deacon because at Deacon, you can put 10 stakes into the ground. You can't do it at Spillane because there is an irrigation system there. So we don't want to destroy the field's irrigation system. So again, June 12th, 11:00 a.m. at the Deacon School is the new date and location for the spring annual town meeting and the spring special town meetings. So she will be releasing that declaration soon. The other thing is, if you haven't voted yet, you still have 58 minutes to get behind to the polls and cast a vote. The turnout, unfortunately, as per usual, seems pretty low today. But not much lower than it has been. Once again, I say this every time, you know, 12,700 people showed up to choose between Biden and Trump. And we might get 10%, of that out today to choose, you know, for a seat that frankly can impact your life a lot more than anybody in Washington can. So I always say pay attention to your local government, and this is an opportunity for you to do so. Alan?
Nothing today.
Thank you. Patrick?
No, nothing today.
Jim?
I'll go on with that.
Okay. Judy?
I'm going to be really quick. The Friends of the Wareham Free Library are going to be accepting used book donations on these two days only, Friday, May 14th from 10:00 to 3:00, and Saturday, May 15th from 10:00 to 2:00. The volunteers will be outside of the front of the main library, and they remind us to tell you that they cannot accept textbooks or encyclopedias. Please note for the Council on Aging that the hip hop dance date has been changed from May 19th to August 2nd because of South Coast using the gym for COVID vaccinations. The grab and go box lunch menu is on the Council on Aging Facebook page and in the senior beacon, which is on the town's Council on Aging website page. Again, box lunches are available Tuesdays and Thursdays, but you have to call a week ahead of time to reserve them. Council on Aging is also looking for volunteers who can provide services for seniors at no or reduced cost. The center keeps a list and seniors can call for help. Some examples of services are yard work, small repairs, house cleaning, personal services, and shoppers. On Saturday, May 15th at 8:00 a.m., the onset buffs cleanup will start. For more information, contact onsetbluffscleanup@gmail.com. Park at the town pier and bring your own tools and gloves. And let's see, last Friday, the Wareham High School key club members, along with their advisor Matt Stanton, performed their spring annual community service for Don't Trash Wareham by cleaning up Minette Avenue. The bags of trash were collected by a private citizen and taken to the dump by the private citizen. Thank you very much to those high school kids. Just a great thing to do. And congratulations to the Wareham Tigers Association cheerleaders. Their spirit and pride teams won both in the U.S. Finals 2021 at Ocean City and brought home two first place trophies. Congratulations, ladies. And presuming ladies and possibly gentlemen.
Yes, thank you. I have a feeling we might be hearing more about that from Mr. Chadwick later on in the meeting. Any other announcements? Okay, we're good. Citizen comments. I will go take a look, see if anybody's got their hand raised in chat. I don't see it. One second, I gotta. Trying to get my chat function up, but I don't see it.
Nancy McHale.
Oh, we do? How come I'm not seeing this stuff?
I just looked it up here, so.
Yeah, it's bothering me that I can't see it. Okay, bring Nancy in, please.
Good evening. Thank you. I don't know if all of you got a chance to take a look at your email today. I emailed you clarification about the Finance Committee's vote on the Solar Bylaw Amendment. So they last, at their meeting last Wednesday, they reconsidered the article in light of the planning board information and asked some more questions, and they voted 5:10 to support that article. So I know that it's printed differently in the actual warrant. That was based on their original vote. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Again, I'm not, I'm not able to see the chat. Is there anybody else that's? Never mind. I figured it out.
I don't see anybody.
There's nobody there.
No, I don't either. Okay, I will move on to board comments. Alan?
Not today.
Wow, you really want to get out of here. Patrick?
All right, I just want to say one thing. You know, they're working out on Cranberry Highway again. And of course, we expect some disruption. But on the other hand, I expect them to think a little bit, and they're not doing a very good job at that. Near the Cranberry buildings, they pushed everybody over to one side, which you'd expect them to do. The thing is, is you can't leave a three-foot by four-foot hole that'll swallow a Volkswagen for you to go into when you go in that lane. And they're just not thinking, these guys. I see them out there. They're just not paying attention. They're not watching. And I wish Alan would bring that to the attention of the zone and see if we can get, you know, them to at least tell them, come on, guys, smarten up a little bit here. It's going to be difficult enough on everybody without forcing them to ruin their vehicles, you know? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Well, I'll wait later. I'll address another part of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Judy? Yeah, I guess the only comment I would make is, you know, as I mentioned in the beginning, we have an election going on. It's possible that Selectman Slavens' time with us may come to an end. You never know what the results of elections are. And I just wanted him to know that, you know, for the most part, it's been pretty good serving with him. So there you go.
You know what? I just got to say the same. It's been great. You know, he's done a lot of work for us, especially on the state levels. Everybody knows that Alan's been right there. And I gotta, I gotta say, thank you, Alan.
State and county.
If for some reason or another you don't return, but I'm pretty optimistic, so.
State and county level, because we got a big fat check the other day.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Jim?
Oh, he knows. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right.
Very supportive.
Yep, thanks. We don't have any appointments, reappointments, or interviews, no licenses or permits, town business, COVID-19 update. Mr. Sullivan, you got any interesting numbers for us?
Yeah, so I mean, last week we had 57 confirmed plus five probable. We're down to 31 confirmed plus seven probable, so hoping we're going to start trending out of the red.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to talk about in terms of COVID or?
No, as you know, we're setting up, Selectman Whiteside mentioned it earlier, getting South Coast hospitals set up in the multi-service center, do vaccinations, and I'm very happy to have them there, and I think it'll be, it'll be good. So we do, we're going to do it for basically a couple of months at a time and just see, see how long it is. I think they're also going to try and get a mobile vaccination vehicle into our area for some of the places some people can't necessarily get to a vaccination center, so.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the board?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can I ask a question, Derek? Did I hear that they were going to have walk-in traffic in the next, you know, week or so here?
Yeah, I'm sure they're going to start moving towards, most of the, most of the locations are moving towards walk-in. I don't know specifically South Coast, so I think that's.
Okay. Well, I didn't, I had heard it. I just didn't have anything formal, but it's kind of nice if that's what they, if they're at that stage, that's terrific.
Yeah, their press release said walk-in was going to be there.
Yeah. Well, that's terrific, if that's what's going on.
Yep.
All right, sorry. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on COVID? No? Trash disposal update?
Derek?
There's trash and it's getting disposed of.
Trash and it's going in the dump. It's good.
Well, yeah, that's good. Hopefully, hopefully more and more recycling is being disposed of as well. And now the key complaint, if, if you will, is that ABC is doing this apparently very random pickup of their old barrels. So I'm seeing their customers who are told, put out your barrel on a Saturday. Oh, the truck just went down the street. I chased the driver down. And they said, oh, not my truck. There will be another truck, but maybe not today, maybe next Saturday. If there is some way for them to coordinate better with their customers, their, you know, prior existing customers, about getting the barrels back, I think that would go a long way towards making everybody's lives easier, especially theirs.
Yeah, we've talked to them about it. I know one of the things is like, I don't know, they were speaking about it on the news real quick tonight. You, you can't find help. You know, we've been having issues with hiring people. I know they lost some people in the beginning. So what they have is they have their regular staff then working on the Saturdays to try and pick those up. And one of the weekends, if you remember, everything gets pushed back a day when it's a holiday, so they couldn't do it on that Saturday. We have been going, 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 speaking to them about it, and they've been, I know they've got the lists. I've been copied on some of the, some of the things they're going through. So it's, I absolutely understand their frustration, and we want this to be as seamless as possible, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm just throwing this out there, you know, maybe it's a dumb idea, but would it, would it be helpful if the customers who, if their old customers, you know, had a spot where they could drop the barrels off? Would that make it more convenient for ABC? Or is there some kind of billing thing where they actually have to go to the, to the house to get them and cross the old barrels off the list? I mean, I don't know what the particulars are for them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Can certainly bring that up.
Yeah. And then that way, at least people, you know, because what I'm hearing is, yeah, I put it out in the street on Saturday, the wind blew, they went all over the place, but I left them out the whole day. And then they didn't come. And then I put them out the next week, and you know, same thing, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, it's getting to be Groundhog Day for some people out there.
Yeah, look, I get it. Like I, like I told one of the people, I wasn't being facetious. I'd fit them in the Prius and do it just to get it done with because it's, it's old hash, if you will. So it's, you know, I can see how it's frustrating for people. We just want to move on from, from this being the, the issue.
Yep.
Well, I just want to make a couple of points if I can. All right, so, you know, Marion doesn't do their own trash. They, they sub out to Waste Management. That's who they use. And if you go to the next town, Mattapoiset, they sub out to ABC. So they, all this has been done in those other towns before us. And by the way, Marion's is running, after speaking to some of the people, is running pretty flawlessly by now. Although, just so everybody knows, I'm just trying to make everybody feel optimistic, that there was lots of problems in the beginning there as well. And so, which I'm sure, and it's now running pretty smoothly, and they don't have any more issues. Same thing happened with Mattapoiset. They had a lot of issues. It seems like all the towns are doing what we're doing because they have no choice. So they're all doing what we're doing, and it does smooth out. And so everybody can be optimistic that it's going to work out and everybody's going to be fine.
Just as an addition to that, Rochester is also on a pickup system with ABC, same deal. A lot of glitches in the beginning and works flawlessly now. It's not easy.
No.
Good enough. Judy, anything to add?
No, all I know is that the municipal maintenance department now is dealing with all of the summer people, the snowbirds. And that has added to the list of people who are unhappy or confused or don't know about the program or whatever. So just be patient, everyone. It will get fixed. Yelling and screaming and calling people names is not helpful.
Okay, thanks. I guess that takes care of trash. Next up, vote to authorize negotiation of Marijuana Courier Host Community Agreement with TradeWinds LLC, Sixth Thatcher Lane, Wareham. This application is coming from Jesse Pitts. This is his LLC, but he's the principal behind the Trade Roots Marijuana Growing Products and Retail Facility that is out at the industrial park. So, you know, Jesse's been before us a few times. And so this is just so that he can get a courier license from the state that would allow him to deliver from his store, basically.
He hasn't even opened yet, has he?
He's close.
How close is he? Does anybody know?
He got held up with, he got held up with some, not our inspection issues, but other inspection issues.
Yeah.
You know, that's all been taken care of. He should be getting his final, I think, by the end of this month.
Well, that would be nice.
Should be open within two to three weeks, Patrick.
That's terrific. That's terrific to know.
And he's looking, he's looking, I believe, now, now, remember, his, his marketing pitch was that he grew better and, and, you know, he wasn't industrial cannabis. He was more connoisseur cannabis. And so he was being very picky about what strains he grew and so on and so forth. But since it takes about four months even for these indoor facilities to go from seed to harvest and processing, I believe he's looking to purchase from other producers in Massachusetts who have a like, you know, roster of connoisseur cannabis for the Two Yacht family that'll be passing through on their way to, you know, Chatham or wherever. So if he does open early, it will be with somebody else's product, but he's, he's pretty much said, if he does that, it's going to be good stuff, so.
I would like to see us put a little pressure on that, that Jordan Plaza retail license out there. Find out what's going with that, because that's been about the same amount of time, and nothing's happened with it. And if it's not going to happen, then we should use that, put that license someplace else or do something else with it.
I agree.
Yeah. Any questions on the request to negotiate?
Just one question I have, Peter. I went through it about two or three times. It looks like it rehashes the whole agreement again, but it adds the courier piece, but I think Jesse's on the line as well. I want to know whether or not the courier cost is added to the retail price, or is that a separate operation? It is a separate dollar amount, because I don't see any income coming to town to that operation only.
Okay, bring, bring, let's bring Jesse in then.
Alan, did you mean to make that great pun?
Yes.
You guys are low tonight.
Well, we could ask the negotiators too. Derek should know this answer to this.
Maybe not.
Can you guys hear me?
Hi, Jesse.
Yeah, hi, Jesse.
Oh, this one, Patrick, this one hasn't come before me.
No, not yet. Okay, all right.
Hello, everybody. This is Jesse, Jesse Pittt speaking.
Hi, Jesse.
How are you? So the courier, the courier license, all the courier license does is allow us to deliver product. So the sale actually takes place at Trade Roots. So really what it is, it's almost an extension of Trade Roots Cash Register.
Okay.
So we can actually deliver directly to the consumer. So TradeWinds will be exclusively working with Trade Roots to make sure that all of the revenue from TradeWinds stays within Wareham. Other courier licenses could get products from other dispensaries, and the sale is actually made at that dispensary, not Wareham, even if, even if the delivery was made to Wareham. So it is aligned with, with all goals of Trade Roots and with Wareham sales.
My question, Jesse, is are you adding a fee for the courier service to the retail customer delivery?
So what we'll be doing is we're actually, we're in debate about that right now. The model is really tough to run. We're probably going to be operating it at a, at a, not a loss, but probably a zero cost to us to deliver it. A lot of these companies do charge 20% you know, price point on top of any, any, any product. But we're trying to make it so that the product is the same price that if you bought at the store. And there will obviously be a little bit of a cost, but that will be associated with the operations, not so much of a revenue cost.
But that still goes, I'm sorry, Alan, go ahead.
So what that would do is if, if you decide later on to add a separate cost, that has to be added into the retail price at your store, or else we'd have to negotiate some kind of separate agreement for that extra income you're getting.
So, yeah, so really, TradeWinds is probably going to operate at a zero, if not a loss. And really where the revenue for Wareham is, is now we're selling more through Trade Roots, which, you know, that's where the, the negotiation with Trade Roots and the talent already has happened. So the sale takes place at Trade Roots. TradeWinds doesn't really make money on the sale of the product. They only make money on their, their courier aspect of the business. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting license. We're not allowed to wholesale or anything like that. We are just a courier. We're not a wholesale warehousing license.
No, I understand. I'm only concerned that as part of the cannabis business overall, that they set up for delivery and for courier, that if there's a separate income for that, that needs to be recognized in the host agreement somewhere, or included in the retail price at the retail store. That's all. I'm not worried about it. It's a little glitch of the way it's set up.
Right. I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. Patrick?
No, I just, what I was going to say was, I think that would all end up going through the register. That's what I wanted to say. But I think Alan's right. On the other hand, if it's a separate entity and it's delivering marijuana, then it's a, it could be a separate business, and it could be charging a separate rate to do that. And that has to, that somehow they got to include that. But I think Derek and the people that are responsible for that will make sure that works out on the host agreement, I'm sure.
Jim?
Yeah, I had looked at that and I saw, no, I saw the reference to Trade Roots in the funding. If, if the, why don't you just run it through Trade Roots then if it's going to be as one company?
Great question, Jim. So a delivery company has to be a 51% owned social equity company. And where I'm a social equity participant, I have to own 51% of that company. Trade Roots, I only had to own 10% of Trade Roots for Trade Roots to be social equity.
Yeah.
So in order to even apply for this license, I have to own 51%. So we had to form a separate entity called TradeWinds to apply for that license where I own 51% and Trade Roots owns the remainder.
So, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Now, what would happen if you, if someone else had the courier service and they were delivering for Trade Roots? How would that work as far as impact and we'd get the sales tax, right?
Absolutely, yeah. The, the, anytime a courier works with a dispensary, the sale takes place at the dispensary.
Correct. What about an impact fee?
That would, that would be negotiated with, through the host community agreement?
Correct. And is there an exclusivity? An agreement in there where you would not deliver for any other retailer?
I, I do believe we included that in our, our letter of intent, yes.
Well, Mr. Sullivan, I can see him taking notes. He, that is doing tic-tac-toe. I'm good now. I just, same thing as the others.
Okay, thanks. Judy?
I have no questions. Thank you.
I don't either. So.
I will move to authorize negotiations of Marijuana Courier Host Community Agreement with TradeWinds LLC, Sixth Thatcher Lane, Wareham, Mass.
Motion to authorize negotiation by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. And we will wait until our negotiators come back and tell us we're ready. Jesse, thank you for jumping in and providing the information, and we look forward to getting this done.
Thank you to the board.
Good luck, Jesse.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, discussion regarding Boys and Girls Club closure and alternatives. For this one, last week, we invited Joanne Gamble. We invited
Chad.
Yep. We invited Jared. We invited the pastor, and we invited Shaila, who's been basically running the Boys and Girls Clubs since Kenny Fauntz was let go. So if we could have all four of them brought forward, please?
I think somebody else came up to Kenny. That's Shaila.
Yeah, I need Shaila's last, Shaila's last name, please. Jared or somebody?
Yes, let me get the correct spelling for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you see him on the screen, Judy?
I see Jared. I don't see Shaila. I just need her spelling.
Shaila Tavares, the, the, the classic spelling of Tavares.
T-A-V-A-R-E-S.
And is she S-H-A-Y-L-A?
Yes.
Thank you.
S-H-A-Y-L-A.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's get, let's get Shaila in as well.
Joanne, you've grown quite a bit.
I hope he doesn't say the same about you.
Nice to see you. And nice to know that you're involved in the community.
Nice to see you too.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're here to talk about, I guess, we're going to have to refer to it as the aftermath of the Boys and Girls Club of New Bedford voting to cease operations in Wareham. I'll lead off with Jared. He spoke last week, so I know that there's an alternative program that's already set up and running in the church next door. But Jared, could you speak about some of the things that have been happening at the Boys and Girls facility since closure?
Yes, I'm going to first say, back to your comments earlier, you will hear from me tonight about our championship win, as you can see behind me. I had to show it off, so my apologies for that, but just wanted to show everyone. Very happy for our teams. Moving on, I explained everything that had been going on about the Boys and Girls Club over the last year and a half, dealing with Kenny and then Nikita and then Shay, Shaila, trying to fix everything finally at the end. We had numerous meetings with Rob Mendez, including John Seed, the president. We found every answer for every question he threw at us. And in the end, I guess they just weren't happy about it. They voted last Monday, 13 to 16, I believe, to shut down the club. They tried this years ago, and an advisory committee came around, and they saved it back then. Sherby tried, Sherby Worthy tried getting an advisory committee again built up, I believe about six months ago. It ended up never going anywhere. Since then, like I said last week, dealing with ins and outs of trying to. dealing with ins and outs of trying to save it, uh, in any way, in every way possible. Uh, unfortunately, everything's closed down. In the last couple of days, I've gotten news that Rob Mendez has started removing stuff in the Boys and Girls Club, uh, that was donated, uh, to the club. Um, two things in particular was, uh, the water cooler that was donated by the Buzzards Bay Coalition and, uh, $3,500 worth of COVID supplies, uh, that I had asked the notice group, uh, to donate, um, which they did. I believe it was back in March. I can't remember the exact date. Um, when, uh, Shayla had reached out to Rob, um, asking multiple times, what's our COVID protocols? What can we do? Um, you know, she asked, I need help, I need help. Um, and nothing, no emails. They all went unreturned. Uh, that's when she reached out to me again and said, can you help me? And I said, yeah, it's no problem. And I made the contacts the best I could to get help. And, uh, we came up with a lot of cleaning supplies, everything, all brand new mops, mop buckets, custodial stuff, $3,500 worth of cleaning supplies. Uh, and we went in there today, um, and saw all the cleaning supplies are gone. Um, the, like I said, the water cooler is gone. Uh, they did, however, uh, let Sherby today go in and remove a whole bunch of art supplies, uh, that where, uh, she'll be using next door. Um, so that's, that's where we're at right now. Uh, I'm not really sure how the rest of the week is going to go. Uh, from what I'm hearing is by Friday, uh, they will have everything else that's in there cleaned out. Um, I know I have a copy of the lease in my truck and I know that they're still paying $900 or they're supposed to be paying $900 a month or 100 plus a month, uh, for the facility. Um, I don't know how the lease can be broken. It's, it's out of my hands. It's up to you guys, but I do have a couple of ideas after, uh, the, the other two people I've talked, that Shayla and Joanne have talked, um, to possibly put together.
Okay, uh, yeah, we're gonna have to look at the lease terms, uh, through council and figure out, uh, you know, what the rights and responsibilities of the parties are in terms of exiting the place. Uh, I will ask the town administrator, have you received any formal notification from the New Bedford Club, uh, that they are closing, uh, the Wareham Club and that they, uh, are intending to terminate the lease?
No, just admonishment of my comments last week.
Okay. Uh, should we admonish back?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, uh, I'll turn it over to, uh, so it's Shayla and Joanne are the ones running, uh, to, to, have taken over the, the programming and, and are doing it in, uh, the, the church next door. Is, am I correct there? Uh, if you two could tell me what, what you're up to, uh, then we can get a sense of, uh, the continuity here.
I'll speak. Um, me, Pastor Dave and Pastor Lisa have opened the doors of the church to take the kids in for the next six weeks until school is over. Um, the YMCA has done a, a great job trying to work with us. They delivered us meals, 25 boxes of meals for our families to take home. Um, we are also working with the school to get the kids tutoring and we are trying to get the bus situation fixed with the school so we could get the bus stop at the Boys and Girls Club re-approved so these kids can be bussed to the church. So we're just, our big issue is the transportation issue that we're hoping to resolve soon. But other than that, I, we are looking for volunteers if anyone wants to come and do any programs with the kids. Um, but yeah, we're just moving on course for the next six weeks of the stuff I've already been doing with the kids.
Okay, great. Uh, Joanne?
Um, I'm gonna give full credit to Shayla for the collaboration with the church. I haven't had any involvement in that. Um, I do have the involvement with CYE though, um, and we're looking to do programming and assist the community any way we can. I know Shayla may have an opportunity for like some sort of kayak trip with the, uh, Buzzard Bay Coalition, um, so that could be something for the kids to go on, uh, right in all set, if that's possible. Um, but Peter, I was really trying to just be involved in the action steps and strategy to handle the Boys and Girls Club in the future or moving forward. Uh, I think it's, it's highly important that we come up with a resolution sooner than later because these kids are our future and it's very, it's very important that they're taken care of and have the right guidance and stuff like that. Um, what I did with the Boys and Girls Club during the pandemic was that was an area for CYE to operate out of. We, uh, relatively new program, but we were giving weekly about 40 boxes of 20 pound, 20 pound boxes of produce to families. Um, so that was a site for us to use and, um, pre-COVID, we used that, the, the main floor of the Boys and Girls Club for educational workshops for middle school and high school students, focused on resume building, uh, financial literacy and so forth. So that was a, that was an area for us while we're developing our own nonprofit too, that they, that they gave to us for free. That was under, uh, Kenny and Shayla at the time. So I think the Boys and Girls Club holds a, a, an important statue to a lot of people in the community and it's just been underfunded for a while. And I, I think that we can take some appropriate action steps to make it, uh, become more important, to, to show the importance of the Boys and Girls Club as it should be. Um, you know, even, even the sign in the front is, is, it's like rotting out. It's falling apart. Uh, so like, like I said, I don't wanna, I can go on about that for, for days, but I just want to let you know that I wanna, or I would like to be a part of like the action steps and, uh, improvements towards that.
Okay. Well, well, thank you. Uh, thank you for, for stepping up in that regard. And I know you have your own organization to manage as well, so I'm very appreciative of that. Uh, so, so pastor, uh, you, you've got, you've got everybody under your wing for six weeks. Is that what we're understanding here?
Yeah, our, uh, our board has approved and, and funded this for six weeks and so we are, um, giving Shayla the support that, uh, that she needs just to continue what she was doing at the Boys and Girls Club. We're currently doing it at the church building, which although, uh, suffices, does present some challenges. Um, but we're, we've been, it's been amazing, the support that we've received, just the, um, the many emails and, uh, just support from the community has been really amazing. So, uh, I'm, I'm grateful to everyone who's just, just really given us the encouragement and we're, uh, we're set for six weeks. Uh, curious of what, that six weeks will end quick. So.
We know.
So, but we're excited to be a part of whatever, uh, is gonna happen here. Of course, our proximity to the building, uh, puts us right in the mix and we would sure love to be a part of, uh, whatever, uh, solution the town wants to come up with.
Okay, excellent. Um, well, I'll turn it over to questions from the board and then we can start talking about next steps here. Uh, Alan?
Uh, I've actually been involved with this for a while now because the discussion actually goes back to when Kenny Fauntz was first, uh, fired is the best way to put it. We've had discussions, as everybody knows, I've been talking about a community center for quite a while. And one of the pieces of the community center, besides being a senior centerpiece, was also Wareham's own Boys and Girls Club. So I've stepped up actually probably three weeks ago and then two weeks ago. And I'm on, I'm a part of a group of people that are all trying to get this at least through summer and actually get something going permanently as well. So, you know, I am in the loop information wise, except for working with everybody involved.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Uh, no, I, I think, uh, I'm really glad that they stepped up. Obviously, I think there's gonna have to be some long-term solutions. And, uh, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to help and I, I know there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that would like to help. But more than anything, I appreciate what you folks have done just jumping in here and, and taking it over, at least until we get through school, which is just awesome. Cause we know how important this is to the kids. I mean, it's, it's really problematic if it doesn't exist, you know? And I, I want to thank you so very much.
Thank you. Uh, Jim?
Um, I like the idea of keeping up, uh, trying to keep positive relationship with the, um, Boys and Girls Club and, and see if there's somehow you can facilitate possible, um, continuation or, or your own separate group. And, um, I think it's good to have open dialogue, um, to get some assistance in, you know, how to operate a larger facility and make sure you're, um, you have the organization to do it and everything in place. And I think you're doing a good job and thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Judy?
Yes, thank you very much, pastor. Um, is there a way on your website that you could post a list of things or people that you might need for the next six, six weeks? Do you have a?
Yes, we actually just started a Facebook group. We've been, we've been intentionally not doing it through the church site, trying to keep it as separate from the churches we, as we can. So, uh, Shayla has just put up a separate, um, uh, Facebook group. And now that, uh, we get, once we get through this meeting and we'll, we'll start to communicate what's needed. Uh, Shayla may want to make a few comments about that and what she's got going on as far as the, the Facebook group is concerned.
Does it already have a name, Shayla?
Yeah, it's Onset Kids Blog. I just created the Facebook page today, so there's not anything posted up yet. I was waiting to see how this meeting goes and then I'll start inviting the community into the group and posting what we might need or how they can assist us for the next six weeks.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Once that's up and running, we'll post the link from our website in case anybody ends up with, on our stuff to, we make sure they can get funneled over there.
Great. Thank you so much. And thanks to all of you for stepping up.
Yeah, for, for, for myself, uh, what I'm gonna do is ask the town administrator to get a copy of the lease to town council and myself so we can take a look at it. Uh, figure out what the, uh, parameters for the New Bedford Club exiting the premises are, uh, whether they're, you know, I, I, again, you know, is there something in the lease saying if they, uh, cease to operate the club there that that automatically terminates the lease? I don't know. We're gonna have to take a look at it, see what's in there. Uh, and, and I'm very appreciative that the church and the pastor have allowed the use of their facility for the next six weeks. Um, but going forward, uh, if we can get back into the, the Hammond School, um, as, as we try to assist you folks in, you know, re, uh, imagining, reconceiving, however you wanna put it, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, I, I think that would be important. Uh, Jared, has he had a question?
Yeah, so, um, I actually reached out to Jamie Foster from the Nantucket Boys and Girls Club. I, uh, reached out to him a couple of months ago, talked to him again today. Um, I'm waiting on John Harding's, um, contact information. Uh, John Harding is the vice president of the Boys and Girls Club of American New England Chapter, uh, to possibly see about whether we go to Cape Cod, uh, chapter or, uh, Nantucket chapter. Um, and the only reason I'm using Nantucket is it's because I have family members and, uh, still friends out there that, for the club that I grew up in out there. Um, so I'm waiting on that and, um, as for the whole thing with the lease, um, I have talked to, uh, John and I talked to, uh, Shayla very briefly. Um, if, if there is a chance, and I'll say this now to just, uh, let it be known, is if there's a chance that this lease is broken, um, I know that the three programs, uh, you know, the, the Tigers, uh, CYE and, um, a program run for the youth in the town by Shayla, uh, she has enough help behind her to, you know, start another nonprofit group that does that type of stuff. Um, the three of us could, you know, come together and be in that facility like we were when Kenny was running it and not have an issue. Um, it just wouldn't be under the Boys and Girls Club name. That's an alternative that I talked to him about. Um, and hopefully over the next couple of weeks we'll meet, uh, to come up with some better plans under that. Um, but as for the Boys and Girls Club right now, it looks like it's, uh, it, it's gonna be a, a, a real tough battle of how it was left. Uh, because from what I understand is Boys and Girls Club of New Bedford has to release the chapter, um, for another organization to take it over. Uh, and with lack of response or emails, uh, from Rob, um, after I'd already talked to him, uh, months ago, willing to take it over and had the funding to take it over then. Um, he refused to let it go at that point and said, it's not gonna happen. I had found, um, you know, a, a couple of companies to, to help support, get this underway until we had all the grants and everything, uh, taken care of.
Okay, thanks. Um, well, you know, while, while we're kind of sitting here sort of spitballing what, what a future club might look like, let me ask Shayla, uh, i- is, is your thought that this should still, uh, be something under the Boys and Girls Club rubric? Is it your thought that this should be an independent Wareham Club? Wha- what are your thoughts?
I think the best bet is to get rid of the Boys and Girls Club name altogether and start something new for the community of Wareham. That could benefit everyone in different aspects. I feel like if we were to get our charter to get picked up from someone else, that the time is not gonna be on our side. Like things might take too long to get into place for us to start anything for the kids. I think the best bet is to start over and just worry about Wareham as a whole.
Okay.
I like that. Sounds.
I like that.
Pastor?
Well, you know what? I, I, I don't mean to get pastoral on you, but many times our, our biggest problems are our greatest opportunities. And so I, I, I think this is an opportunity for our community to do something, um, great and to have some vision for that building. And I think that, um, the sooner, the sooner we kind of put the Boys and Girls Club thing in our past and start looking toward the future, I think, um, all the better. And I'm, I'm in agreement. I think we should do something here locally and, and dream it up ourselves.
Okay, thanks. Joanne, is that, uh, something that, uh, appeals to you as well?
Yeah, I, I, I think as Patrick said, um, it's a perfect opportunity to kind of use, use our thoughts and everything that we're talking about right now to, and put it on paper and like make an action plan and, and really try to move forward with this. Um, we gotta really worry about our community first. And these kids are gonna need it bad. So the faster we move at it, the better.
Okay. Well, the, well, that's interesting because it, that kind of, you know, it, it sets out two possible paths. One is affiliation with an existing Boys and Girls Club with perhaps a friendlier management team, uh, than the one that was recently experienced, uh, and the other is to set up something totally independent. Uh, you know, and there's, there's good and bad points to each, as I'm sure you, you can imagine. Uh, affiliating with another club, you, you, you know, you've got instant support, uh, you've got instant backup, if you will. You've got the resources of the other club to help out. However, you're still tied to them and so you give up some independence, which I think is, if I heard Shayla correctly, she's looking, uh, for that independence. Uh, and I can't say as I blame her based upon the most recent experience. So, but what, what I guess what I would ask is for the four of you to sort of, uh, further, you know, put some thought into, you know, either affiliation or independence and, and then, you know, come back, uh, next meeting and, and tell us sort of which direction you're leaning in. And in the meantime, uh, we can get together and figure out what the deal is with the lease and, you know, how soon that space could be available so that we can start planning to, to, to make things happen, uh, so that we don't have any lag time between the, the six-week period in the church and the summertime. Because I know these programs are, obviously they're a great adjunct for, for after-school things to help kids with homework, give them guidance, so on and so forth, keep them busy. So they're not doing the things, uh, we all did when we were kids. Uh, but, you know, they also need this, these programs in the summer as well, uh, because that's a great opportunity to go out and get in trouble in Wareham. We all know that. So I, I think it's important to try to segue from one thing into the next, uh, without missing, uh, and having big gaps. So, is there anything else for these folks? Alan?
Well, I guess, Peter, you're speaking from experience as a kid.
Pretty much. Uh, most of those offices have retired, so you won't be able to talk to them. Let me see. Uh, Patrick?
Nah, I've said what I need to say and, um, you know, let's, let's, uh, I, I totally believe that the way to go is without them. Uh, you know, consequently, uh, just from my time around, um, the relationship has never been terrific anyway. You know, consequently, just from my time around, the relationship has never been terrific anywhere. The checkbook was held in New Bedford and I'm not sure that they actually spent any money here, very little. Whatever money was raised was, was mostly gone back to New Bedford. And, you know, I, I, I think it's a, it's a sad, it was sad the way it turned out. But I think this may be, like the pastor said, an opportunity to turn it into what we would like it to be. And, you know, make it happen. And I think that's, I think he's right about that.
Okay, Jim?
Well, I, I was over there last Friday, kind of looking around the grounds and the building and about quarter or three. And I guess it was Bob Mendes and. Another young lady came in to open the doors for the last day. So I spoke with him. Walked around the interior of the building, kind of got a. You know. Had a discussion with him on, on what had occurred and what's taking place and what they were getting for revenues. Per month and the cost of operations and lack of being able to do fundraising this year. And other such things. Unfortunately, it didn't work out. And again, I, I thank Shayla and, and the pastor and everybody else for stepping up. I think when you, when you go to run programs like this, you have to have licensing and credentials and. It's just not, I don't believe, at least my, my time at the institution. I mean, you can just, you should just open up doors and start running something. I don't know what your backgrounds are and, you know, if, or anything else. But, you know, I wish you luck and hopefully we can work together and, and come up with a solution for everybody. That's all.
Thank you. Thanks. Judy?
I just want to say to the younger generation who obviously have stepped up. Thank you very, very much. You have proven to me one more time that Wareham is an outstanding community. That you all care about each other and you care about the, the town. And I just want to say thank you. And Pastor, thank you again for providing the space, but clearly these three young people have. Stepped up to the plate in a huge, huge way. Thank you.
Yes, Alec of Judy's sentiments. Thank you for, for stepping up. When other people failed the kids, you jumped in and have done something for them. To, to maintain the services that have proven so helpful and beneficial to them. Are you all available to come back next week? Yeah, seeing everybody nod. Okay, I'll put this on the agenda for next week to, to resume the conversation. We will look at it from our end and see what the lease is all about. And if you could have some internal discussions in terms of your preference for how to go forward. I think we can get off to a pretty quick start if we do that.
Just one comment, Peter.
Yeah.
Everybody, I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody. This is all about the kids. Simple as that. This is not about the adults or any games. It's strictly about the kids.
Yep, absolutely. Well, thank you all for, for what you've done and what you're going to do. And we look forward to continuing the discussion next week.
Thank you so much.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Just want to say, Mr. Slavin, thank you very much for all the help that you've done to the Tigers and I wish you the best of luck tonight.
Can't talk politics as long as the polls are still open.
Yeah, you, you gotta wait another six minutes, but anyway.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you again. We'll see you next week. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down, we've got a couple of. MVP program things here. And I believe we have engineer Russ Kleecamp available to. Way in on these. Was Derek, do you know if Director Buckland was going to be part of this or not? We lose Derek?
Hi, hi, good evening to the board. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, we have two MVP projects and then actually a, a CZM grant after this next on the agenda item. So I'll explain the projects one by one, give a brief summary of the scope of work and of the funding. And I'm happy to do my best to answer any questions that the board may have. So the first project is regarding Swift Beach. Mr. Buckland reached out to me and asked if we could help prepare. A grant application for the municipal vulnerability preparedness program. That looks to reinforce municipal infrastructure, whether it's parking lots, you know, water mains, sewer mains, things like that. As long as it's a municipally owned item that was identified by the town through the MVP planning process, which this was. It would be eligible for funding. So these are the applications. Both of these programs are extremely competitive. But I feel that these are good projects and I've been fortunate to work with the town on several past grant applications that have been successful. So regarding the Swift's Beach, to put it in a nutshell, it's basically a, a facelift of the area. This project has been in discussion for several, several years now. And we're looking to re-nourish the beach. Revamp the parking areas, include proposed site amenities to help with the flow of traffic and help better the area. Potentially look at relocating the parking lot. There's a large grass area that if we relocated the parking lot. We could potentially increase the area of the, the beach itself, the resource area. But again, with this project, there's numerous options that we can go. So obviously the first step is a kickoff meeting with all the vested stakeholders to gather the community input and the goals and the desires, things like that. So it's a, the end product will be a conceptual design of a improved facility for the town. The cost is roughly, I'm speaking in round numbers here, but the cost, the overall cost of this project is $52,000. And the grant would be covering roughly $40,000, leaving approximately $13,000 for the town to provide matching funds. And that can be done through a cash match or in-kind services. I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And that's a 25% match from the town.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Okay, any questions, Alan?
No, the, basically the, how to explain, Serpent does a lot of MVP grant writings for a lot of the towns. Basically, we cover from Wareham all the way to Westport on the land side. These are constant things we're doing. Also, the, we'll be discussing later, I just got away now, the flood resiliency is another project that. So, you know, that basically Serpent gets heavily involved with. And for people who don't understand, Swift Beach in particular used to have what we call barrier beaches. Which protects the land going up and everything else. And unfortunately, over the years, the barrier beaches have been washed away. And the Swift Beach area is highly susceptible to any kind of really harsh nor'easter. Or if we get a serious hurricane, most of that area is going to get washed away because the protection of the barrier beaches is gone. So we need to kind of look at this very seriously because it is, it is one of the most highly risky areas we have along the Cape. Thank you.
Patrick?
No, I'm fine. I'm all set. Thanks.
Jim? DJ Mike, Jim?
It wasn't coming on. I want to thank Derek for forwarding the, the grants. So we'd have to take a look at them. And. My understanding is basically three options you're looking at on the number of them down there. And, and like you said, you're going to have, bring some community leaders in and different directors. So that's, that's good. Come up with a plan and, and then present it. And that's after we receive the grant, correct?
Yes, sir. We would have to receive the funding and the scope of work that was forwarded. This is the contractual scope of work. But, you know, regardless, however many meetings it takes with the, with the residents, and I've done this with past projects with the town. You know, I give out my business card. If anybody has questions, concerns, I'm, I'm a big believer in communication. That's where projects go. Go to the south and a project like this that has so much community input, I, I think that's going to be critical. So we generally say we look up to three alternatives, but if there's other combinations or other things the town wants to look at, would, would be happy to do so as part of this project.
Anyway, thank you. And then, all right, I'm, I'm good on this. Thanks.
Okay, Judy?
I'm all set on this one. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I am too. I would just echo Alan's remarks. Swift Beach for storm resistance is like ground zero in this town. I think during Hurricane Bob, they got whacked with a 15-foot storm surge and that was a borderline category hurricane. So it's definitely exposed. It's definitely right there waiting to take a big hit. So I, I think it's good to try to do what's possible to mitigate it. I guess next up would be the downtown.
Do you want to do a vote on that one or do you want to do them all at the same time?
Doesn't matter.
Well, I'll move to approve the MVP grant program for Swift's Beach Resiliency Improvement. Which is called the Swift's Beach Nurse-Nourishment Management Plan and Site Improvement.
Third.
A motion by Judy, second by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. So on to the next one.
Thank you. The next project, this is building upon the previous report that the Woods Hole Group did. That identified the, I believe it was the critical town assets. And obviously downtown Merchant's Way, Bessie Park, that area. Excuse me, was identified as a, as a, as a critical area. So what the next step of this process is, now that the Woods Hole Group basically said, hey, this area is subject to some potential damages with future. Whether it's storm events, sea level rise, climate change, what are the engineered solutions that we are now looking to implement? And that's what this project will do. It will look at the different options out there. Some options are out there, but we know very quickly they can be vetted away like a large hurricane barrier or something, you know, a, a, a major. Piece of infrastructure that can be looked at quickly and vetted out. And part of the reason why we look at these options, that even though we may know they might not be the optimal. Eventually, when this goes to construction funding, you know, the potential funding may come through organizations such as FEMA. And you're required to show that an alternative analysis has been done. So this is why we do this work as part of these grants. Because this one is likely a much larger project when it comes to construction and, and something like FEMA would be a, a grant program. Would have to pursue for a, a seven or eight figure construction budget, which this would likely have. So what the scope of work looks at is basically the downtown Narrows area. It identifies the flood elevations that we would have to design resiliency improvements to. And then comes up with an option of up to three different improvements. It was identified, I know there's been a lot of talk about a, a river walk. And expanding, potentially expanding the landform on Merchant's Way to increase the resource area. Which could allow us to do things like living shorelines and other nature-based solutions. So we are very. Understanding of that, of that option. And we are going to propose that as one of the, one of the options. We do have a few major, I don't want to call them major obstacles, but a few things, you know, crossing the railroad tracks, for example, is how do you get pedestrians from point A to point B? We have to look at that. You know, we want to make sure we have a canoe, kayak, launch, things like that to make sure we utilize the. The recreational opportunities that that body of water has. And then again, with a river walk and a boardwalk, as much as I'd, I'd love to say that I'm a brilliant engineer. And the concept I come up with right off the bat will be accepted and applauded by everybody. I'm sure it won't be. I'm looking at what the town of Sandwich is going through with their boardwalk. And it's going on and on and on and on. These are highly aesthetic and visual projects. So I understand that there's just going to be a lot of input and there's going to be a learning curve. And we'll have to present it appropriately to the residents, to the community and, and go from there. So this project, it's a, a little more, has a, a larger scope to it. The total project cost is roughly $110,000. And the grant amount for 75% grant, roughly $82,000, with the town matched 25% being approximately $27,000.
Okay, questions on the board? Alan?
Well, as everybody knows, probably at least five, six years ago, maybe a little longer, we actually did a full layout of the boardwalk. Mr. Buckland and I have been, gone off to Boston to fight with Mass DOT Rail about the two control gate crossings. We're basically working with some funding, grant funding in order to do all the engineering, etc. Because the state doesn't want to help us, except we have to present a full-blown project that they will have to look through. And then if they decide to accept it, that's probably the hardest thing I've had to deal with in a long time is working with Mass DOT Rail. They, they try to discourage us every way possible not to do this. And they threw it all on us. So just everybody understands that. We've already made a reasonable, you know, step up on this, but it's not an easy thing and it will be expensive. But if downtown Wareham wants to survive and thrive, this is a critical piece for us to do.
Great, thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, no, I, I think these are, are definitely worthwhile and, and trying to get, obviously, and go forward. I mean, downtown area there, as we know, we've all been talking about it for a long time, that we need to, to do something to make that even more viable. And, and everything that we can do to make it better is good and I'm, I'm all in favor.
Okay, Jim?
I have to agree with two previous speakers and. You know, I, I think and, and also Mr. Kleecamp, you know, a big hurdle is going to be. Getting permission to have crossing, crossing over the railroad tracks. And I don't know how long, do we really have to wait to? Get into the conversation on that?
It's three years, it's three years for me already, Jim.
I know. So I mean, you know, just food for thought.
Yeah.
Judy?
I'm all set.
Yeah, I mean, these, these are things that, you know, as Alan mentioned, if you, if you're going to talk about redevelopment down there, you've got to solve these coastal resiliency conundrums. To, you know, protect against the sea level change and everything else. Again, that's, that's another area that gets lit up pretty good with a category two or three hurricane. 1954, my grandfather rode my grandmother down Main Street after the, the storm had subsided. But the water was still, you know, several feet high on Main Street. They lived on High Street at the time. He dragged his skiff down the hill and they rode around to watch the Cornwell Building burn. So pretty exciting stuff. We hope not to see that ourselves, but it's inevitable that eventually another storm is going to come along and do some damage there. So it's, it's time to start planning how to, how to mitigate that. So can we have a motion?
I will move to approve the MVP grant program for downtown Wareham Flood Resiliency.
Okay, motion by Judy?
75% match, yeah.
Becca?
Second by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero on that one. So now we've got CZM, so we're, we're getting into a different jurisdiction here.
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. So the final grant, this is a, through the Office of Coastal Zone Management. Which is different from MVP, but they are both under, technically under the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So good luck with all the acronyms. I think after 20 years, I finally started to remember what they all are. So this project here, it's, this is just the installation of two. Let me back up a little bit. So they, I've been working with the Water Pollution Control Facility. This project was just the, the routine of repair or replacement of, of two generators at two of the sewer pump stations. There was, where we put out to bid a project that replaced the generators at the Saltworks Station and then also at Terry Lane Pump Station. Mr. Campina opted to, after discussions, to put these generators on elevated platforms to get them above the flood zone. Which especially the Saltworks, I mean, that's literally right on the water, right down there at the Narrows. So this project was put forward, budgeted. The WPCF was planning on doing this, just part of their, I guess, capital improvement projects. It's on the town meeting ballot for the, for the funding, which is really, I believe it's just carryover. It was already approved previously. But when I saw this grant opportunity, I said, you know what? With the timing of the generator project and the timing of the grant, this might be a really good option to offset some of the construction costs. Because this grant, the coastal resiliency will, will fund improvements. It won't fund routine maintenance, things like replacements of generators. But it will pay for that elevated platform that the generator sits on. So in the case of Saltworks, since we already had the bids go out for this, that's going to be $170,000, which the town or the WPCF already planned on paying for. This is a good project. It's definitely eligible. And if it gets funded, the grant will provide $127,500 to offset these costs. So it's really just kind of a, I don't want to say a, a free money shot, but it's, it's, you know, we're just trying to find ways to help. With these grants, help offset some of the costs that the WPCF is incurring. So I think it's a good, good opportunity. Questions?
Alan?
Russ, do you know how many of the pump stations are vulnerable?
Yes, I do, Mr. Slavin. The, I don't have the number at the top of my head, but we did a report. The majority are would see impacts with 100-year flood elevation, especially some of the, the largest three Cohasset, Cohasset Narrows. Hines and Narrows all have some substantial vulnerability. Um, all have, uh, some substantial vulnerability improvements. And we did submit a brick application to, um, improve, uh, both Hines, I believe all three of them. Um, it's the majority of the 40-something pump stations. I want to say probably 30-something. I can get you an exact number.
No, I just want to make people understand what we're seeing. And the, the cost is probably, I don't even want to discuss how many millions of dollars it is when we get done. Uh, the other thing is I'm hoping you'll be watching the, uh, Air American Recovery Act. Uh, one of the key pieces that's available in that 1.9 trillion dollar program is the sewer. You know, water and then sewer, that, those are some of the several key things that are allowed. I'm hoping that we take advantage of this, because this is going to be a one-time opportunity for probably five to 10 years.
I, that's an excellent point. In fact, we're working with other communities on Cape Cod that are just getting notifications now of several millions of dollars that they're receiving. Um, that can go towards sewer infrastructure amongst other things. Um, you know, in the past that these programs have asked for shovel-ready projects, but as long as projects are pretty close, um, we've gotten them in the queue. So absolutely, if the town has projects, um, I, I, I believe really it's not just sewer, but also water infrastructure, other roads, bridges, culverts, things like that. Um, get them as far along as you can, because once this opportunity comes around, you want to be able to take advantage of it.
And you're working on the canal project as well, which is another one.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Patrick?
Yeah, no, it's the same thing. Every, every one of these are worthwhile, uh, going forward, especially if we can get them. At, uh, the split is perfect and how can you go wrong? Paying 25% of these costs of these things is tremendous. And, uh, it's great that we're putting them together and it's nice to see a lot of grants getting written and that's a good thing.
Thank you. Uh, Jim?
Um, no, I just, I agree and, um, I'm glad we did the first part and had the study done by Woods Hole, so we can, um, apply for these. And thanks for moving forward on, that's all.
Uh, Judy?
I'm all set to make a motion.
Uh, please do.
I move that we approve the coastal resilience grant program for the elevated generator platform Saltworks Sewer Pump Station through the CZM program.
Third.
Okay, motion by Judy, some numerical designation by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Uh, thank you, Russ. And we look forward to seeing what else, what other things we can come up with.
Thank you so much. Uh, would you mind if I just ask one final question?
Um, right ahead.
Regarding the logistics, I did email to Cassandra, um, some letters that I drafted for the, for, for the board with all the signature lines. Um, as far as for the two MVP, that's actually due this Friday. It's an electronic submission. Um, should I reach out to Cassandra to get, um, once the board, uh, signs those letters and, and get that from her? Or just how, how does this, that the next step happen?
We-
We'll have to get in there and physically sign the things, which is, you know, not, I, I don't think it's that big a deal. As long as it's three signatures on it, that's good for your purposes. Uh, and, uh, once that happens, we'll have Cassie get in touch with you and, uh, she can scan them and send them to you.
Great. That, that's great. And yeah, the, um, the CZM grant does not do actually until May 24th. So it's a, it's a miracle. I might actually get it done, uh, with time to spare, time to spare. So thank you so much.
You understand that we're, our office is closed on Friday, so you need to get this on Thursday.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make a point of getting in there and, and getting these signed. Uh, and thanks, thanks again.
No problem. Thank you so much. It's, uh, great to see everybody and, and be safe. Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
Judy, it's not Russ's first rodeo with Wareham.
I know that.
Nor the last. Uh, okay, discussion to approve the abatement recommendation for curbside billing fiscal year 21. This is, this is why we see all that paperwork on the, uh, tables in room 24, correct?
Yeah, and that's, um, it's kind of in, they aren't abatements, they're the opt-outs, so that's, that's incorrectly listed.
Okay, so well, it's scriven as ours, so we'll call it opt-outs. That's, that, that's how it came over, uh, to go on the agenda. So thanks for the clarification that it's actually opt-outs, not abatements. Um, questions from the board? Alan?
No.
Patrick?
Nope.
Jim?
I'm good.
Judy?
Ready to make a motion.
Please do.
I move to approve the opt-out recommendation for curbside billing fiscal year 21 in the amount of $11,056.25.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Uh, new discussion of vote to recommend articles for 2021 annual Springtown Meeting. Uh, Mr. Flaherty, uh, I'm going to invite him, uh, next week, uh, to speak to the school naming article. Uh, we heard from the other two petitioners last week, plus we have the solar bylaw ones left, uh, to vote on. I don't know that we need to do it tonight.
No.
Okay, I'm getting head shakes. Uh, okay, moving on, uh, same with the special, uh, any town business recently, not recently anticipated within 48 hours. Alan?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Jim?
No.
Uh, Judy?
No, thank you.
Myself, no. Uh, Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, the, uh, the main thing is just a reminder, everybody, that Sunday is Mother's Day. So it's a special day and take care of that special person in your life. So.
Thank you.
Let none be forgotten.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Liaison Initiative Reports. Alan?
Uh, it was a quiet week last week, Serpent Commission. I chaired the monthly meeting, nothing much there. Uh, since we're past eight o'clock, I would like to, uh, thank all the town employees for the last 15 years. Uh, I've enjoyed working for them and with them and it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Uh, Patrick?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Jim?
Um, no, not, not, yeah, a little bit. Um, Mrs. Whiteside touched on, I guess it was, um, the, the Credit Union doing, um, monitor and, uh, turn-ins last week. Um, our, um, recycling center there on, is that on, uh, Maple Springs Road, the corner of Maple Springs near the DPW there?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they, they also accept them. If you look on the website, they accept a lot of things. So, I mean, for a fee, of course, and they're, they're Wednesdays and Saturdays, uh, a hot day on Wednesday. So we do have some, you know, opportunities to get rid of, um, difficult to, items which are difficult to get rid of. You know, it costs you a couple of dollars, but, um, it's, it's local and, uh, it's, it's pretty regular. Um, all volunteer, they do a good job. And, um, not just them, but all the committees and, you know, I appreciate everybody's effort and, um, I'm, I'm sure everyone here does. And, um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Judy?
All set. Thank you.
Got myself all set. Uh, let's see, we need to pay our council?
Move to authorize the payment of the bill for the Law Office of Richard Bowen.
Second.
Okay, motion to pay Town Council by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes, we probably should put the arm out in that motion too, though.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Same old, same old.
I know. People complain.
Yep, well, uh, Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Uh, we have one set of minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2021. We were all there.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve minutes by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Alan?
Motion to-
Get away.
Second.
Okay, motion adjourned by Alan, seconded by Judy, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zero zero. Thank you, Wareham. Uh, have a good night, be safe. And we'll come back at it next week. Take care all.
Thank you, Alan.